Open the meeting to order for Thursday, February second. All three selectmen present, administrator is present.
Make a motion.
And note, and recording for the citizens of Dunbar is Mr. Fred Mullins. Thank you, Fred, for being here. Okay, go ahead, Dave.
Okay, under all business, I'll approve the regular meeting minutes for January twenty-sixth.
All is under way. Is there amended, please, for a discussion, are you answered, correct?
Yep.
And as always, all in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Has amended?
I don't think they were amended, but they are, yes.
They were. Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion on those? They do not have to be sealed, so they're good. All in favor?
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna open a public comment. Right now, you're on the agenda, sir. You're Mr. Paul.
Yes, it's Paul Grun.
You're on the agenda, stand by.
You want me to stand by?
Yeah, we go through, we have an agenda we follow. So you're on the agenda in town business, so you're coming up, you'll be momentarily. Okay, having no more public comment, we'll close public comment. Now, we're ready in the town business while you're on.
Okay, I.
You can come up here if you like. Can't be yelling at us or we don't.
I don't do.
Just state your name, sir, for the.
Name of the first one. One of thirty-six. It's by. So it's Paul Grun, kind of with the thirty-six, Chris Silver, Dunbar, and I have become more concerned about apparently what the town's actions are relative to a building that I built. I came in and applied for building permit about four years ago. It's a duplex that's separated from the firewall down the middle, but it's set up so that it can be multi-generational. I received this, I provided the full set of plans to Mike Cummings. The plans were never deviated from. They, and I did just glance at, it was an affidavit or some documents that someone from the town had when they came to the duplex. I think it was last Friday or the Friday before, and I was able to read a little bit of it. They never gave me copies of it, so I don't know exactly what it was, but it did say that I had refused entry to the property. And I want to let you know that is false. I did not refuse entry. I told Mike that there is one woman that lives there that is very difficult to deal with, and she has told me very loudly and sternly she does not want anyone in her space at any time. And that's what I told Mike, that this woman, I don't want to say anything disparaging at all, but she said some bizarre things, and I don't want to go in there at all because I, I don't want any issues with her. And I told Mike, you have to talk to the occupants there and get their permission because I don't think I can give permission for someone to go in to someone else's living space. So I built the building according to plans. Initially, I rented out the A side to, it was a mother, three kids, and a grandmother, and they were sharing, it's shared space. And then, once I rent that half of the building, they can do whatever they want with it. And I didn't keep track of who's living where or whatever. The utilities is split in two, side A and side B. On side B, I had a young couple with kids, with parents that were gonna move in, and that fell apart near the end. And then I had three consenting adults renting. So they rented side B, and then they can do whatever they want within it. They have, the utilities are split A and B. It's not set up with four sets of utilities, which would clearly look like a four-unit building.
So how do they differentiate who's paying the electric?
A and B. They, I don't tell them how to pay. When you have, like, three adults, I don't tell them how they have to pay the bill. I, I have nothing to do with the electric. They apply to the electric company for credit or, or whatever, get service going. I don't, I don't deal with that at all. The electric, the gas, the, what, the phone, the internet. I think that's about it in town. So I, I did have some issues in, in building the building. I did get my certificate of occupancy, and then I was worried. Because Mike Cummings, a very, very nice man, but I ended up talking to a, it's either a member of the planning board in another town, and he told me what the building inspector should be doing, and unfortunately, it wasn't happening. There were no, no GFI or ground fault interrupt breakers on the B side, which is required by electrical code. So I called the state electrical inspector to come to the property and inspect it, and he ordered the electrician to take out all the old-fashioned breakers and put in, it's either ground fault interrupt or arc fault breakers to get it up to code because I wanted the whole building up to code. Unfortunately, I thought the building inspector was gonna make sure that I was up to code. And the reason I'm so concerned about that is I don't want to get sued because I built the building substandard or not to code, and then someone died in it. So I'm the one that pulled the inspector in. Then there were a lot of problems with the furnaces, which had been approved. I called the chief, Mark Prindeville, the chief mechanical and safety inspector for the state of New Hampshire. He came, looked at the furnaces and said, take them out, they don't meet code. Put in the proper ones, and then you have a whole list of things that had to be done. So unfortunately, I had already moved people in because I had the stick, certificate of occupancy, thought it was safe, but we got the work done. I did it as soon as I could, corrected, took out the two furnaces, put in proper furnaces. Basically, he, the prior plumber ran the domestic water and the heating water on the same circuit. He just ran one circuit, and that's how you get Legionnaires' disease and some other problems. So I had to put in a proper heating unit with two separate zones with the water completely separated. Now, the only issue that came up while everything was, like, almost completely done is Mike said, you can't put electric ranges in the basement. And this may have happened right before the certificate of occupancy, or I don't know the exact timing. And initially, I did not. And then we got into COVID and different issues and people trying to stay apart, and I told him, that's okay, but I want you to show me an ordinance, a rule, a regulation, zonings, a statute, something that says I can't have two stoves in the, in my house. I mean, I think I'd have two stoves in my house, which, the white colonial, and that's, I don't know if any rule or law or whatever. He never came up with anything. So I started, I started thinking about, what's the safest thing here? The safest thing is not a hut plate on the counter, which is what I had initially. The safest thing is a range. So I had, I put the two ranges in, and, and he, you know, he knew about it. Okay, so I'm a little concerned that I never got a copy of what it was that the town presented to a court in Concord to get a, I don't know what it's called. It was supposed to be a, I think the document said something like a health and safety inspection. There was no inspection. There were no electrical outlets checked, there were no temperatures of the water checked. There was nothing checked. They just came in, took pictures of the two ranges, and left. And that's, that's okay, they can do whatever they want to do, but that was not the pretense they went in there. They went in with the pretense that I had a dangerous situation happening that was, you know, possibly detrimental to the health and safety of the people that were there. And that's, that's wrong. Well, I think that's it. I mean, that's my concern. I've never been before the selectmen before, and I'm not asking you to do anything you're not supposed to do or whatever. I don't even know what power you have relative to the other boards in town or whatever. The building inspector, the new one that came over, seems to be wanting to change what the prior building inspector already approved. And as I said, the two things there, they said I changed the plans. I did not, and I would like to see whatever was presented to the court to show that I changed anything. And they said I refused access to the property. I had Mike in that property so many times, it was unbelievable. And he never properly inspected it, as I said. Ground fault interrupt, arc faults, all the showers were cold, one of the sinks was backwards, one of the showers, the hut and coal was backwards. He didn't, he didn't catch it, I didn't catch it until afterwards. I'm not an inspector. I'm just the owner, and I, I apparently erroneously thought that the building inspector would make sure that the building was being built to code. I thought that was the, like, the duty of the building inspector.
I think the building inspector works towards that goal, but they can't catch everything. So again, some things that weren't caught, that could be the case. I know I've never been to an inspection where Mike has not checked for ground fault in the kitchens and by the bathroom, by the vanity, so. I'm not gonna speak for, you know, you against Mike, but I won't say that he's been very conscious of that. In fact, he's brought the state inspectors on more inspections for this town than any other building inspector we've ever had to get himself more familiar with the codes and whatnot. So he's, as far as that goes, I know that he does check that in his due diligence. They've kind of kept us abreast of it. When you hire a building inspector, the selectman's job as a building inspector kind of goes away so you hire somebody to do that job when you try and allow them that position to do that. So we oversee them, but we don't really get involved in this. But they have kept us abreast, and they did show us some signatures on the plans where it came to us like it was a four-unit being built, and you were told that in that zone only a duplex can be built, and there's some signage on the plan from you saying that it would only be a duplex. And where some of this has come up is we've had people come into us and are renting from you and showed us their leases and whatnot, and it shows the different levels and different apartments, and that's where that confusion, I think, has come up within the town. Okay, I, people with different mailbox addresses living on the lower level versus people living in the upper ones, is that?
Oh, it's just A and B, but that's okay. I, there was a, one separate document at one point relative to fifty-one B in the basement because they wanted some written paperwork relative to receipt for monies. But I explained to them in advance that they would be sharing it with the, with the upstairs tenant. They met before they signed, before they signed the final lease, which is just three of the old names. They agreed to share the whole side. I, and I told them I had nothing to do with utilities or what you do, or who's upstairs or who's downstairs. You guys can do whatever you want there. And the people on B, all three signed it. On the A side, and I do, I have a copy of it, I made the, the lease with all three names because that's what they agreed to in advance, so they early agreed to it. Then they signed separate leases. The Garen, I can't spell his name, Cozette Tech, signed the lease, and Corey Parent signed a different one, but the same exact thing. And at one point, I was talking with, with them, and they wanted to, they like grabbed it from me, and they wanted to make a copy or whatever. And, and they, you know, that's, so they, he kept it. And he said, Garen says that the building inspector can contact him. I mean, and I've not yet spoken to the building inspector, to tell him that that's, that's the guy that has the original leases. He took them, taking Anna was, I don't want to say anything disparaging in any way, but she, she kind of like flipped out, and I'll tell you. She said that I forged Garen's signature, and so she was furious. And then Garen admitted that, no, that was his signature. He had signed it, and he had given it to me. But he, he let his wife go through this rant, and I feel sorry for her. She was pregnant, very pregnant at the time, well, pregnant, it's pregnant, so. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable even saying anything negative about her. She's a wonderful person, and.
Mr. Grun, I would recommend that at this point, let it go through the process. They're still doing investigations on the building side. We're not really abreast of all the details, and I thank you for bringing it to our attention. But there are some discrepancies, and it sounds like you have your opinion, the building department has their opinion, and they, they may feel you're in violation, you may feel you're not violation. I said, let this work, work itself out and play itself out. I just know we have our town attorneys involved with that, and I don't think we're gonna make any decision or take any side here except we're gonna let the facts lead us to which way we have to support.
Yeah, that's, as I said, it started out with side A with three children, mother, grandmother, for three or four years, and they did whatever they wanted to do there because I don't go in and do inspections, like, I don't show up if something's leaking.
But I, I would say just let, let the process, keep your facts together, and I think you'll be called, you may be called to present your facts, and the building department will present their facts, and there'll be some decisions made as we go forward. If anything, is, is, as the, our town attorneys recommend we do, we go forward. It's still under investigation, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I think, I think Mike Cummings' actions speak for themselves. He was trying to keep it from becoming a four-unit. And that's what Mike was trying to do at the time, and.
Well, the, the only thing he said was you can't put a range there.
In doing that, he was trying to keep it from having an upstairs unit and a downstairs unit on both sides.
Well, I can take the ranges out, but hut plates are more dangerous. I mean, any, anyone in their home.
You can have ten ranges in your home, it doesn't matter, it's your, it's your, it's a home. You don't, you can have as many as you want, it doesn't really require, as long as you meet the, the wiring support for it. But the thing is, that is, there's no, no ordinance, no law against having two ranges in a home.
But that's what he seemed to be telling me, and that's what.
I think, I think, I recall the story before he left, and I think he corrected himself by saying he agreed with, I think, took your side and saying that there are two ranges that couldn't be had in any home. I think we call that, he was talking about it.
Yeah, I, I, he may have taken some of the wrong steps, but his biggest challenge was to try and keep you from making it a four-unit, and that's what he was trying to do. And it sounds like what we have there is kind of a combination unit. One side is more like two units, whether you have leases signed together or not. The other side is a family that's using both up and down, and so, you know, he's looking, there's, there's an ordinance in town that you can only have a duplex in that zone, and if you're allowed to have a four-plex there or a four-unit, then other people are not gonna want to try and do the same thing without going through the proper chains. You could apply for variance for that type of building in there, and if it's allowed by a variance, then they would have had to allow that. They used to be allowed in that zoning district before, you know, one across from Lee Coles' house is a four-unit there. So they were allowed at one time, and then as they updated some of the codes in town and some of the different differences, they're only allowed up here on the main roads now. So.
I thought a very important part of it was that the, the electrical, the heating, the water was just divided in two, side A, side B. And if, and if you were gonna build a four-unit, I would think the town would require separate utilities for each unit. And that's not where I am. That would be a mess at this point, to have to separate everything out. I don't want to separate out. I want to rent it out to families that have, like, a disabled child or elderly parents or someone in a wheelchair. Originally set it up for wheelchair access on the backside. I thought that would be something that would be happening. Older people moving with their kids, I might like to move in with my kids at some point, and that, you know, that's the way it would be. So I, okay, I hope I'm, I feel like I'm in, like, the wrong place, but not really.
No, the thing is, you know, we hear you. The thing is, we hear your concerns, but we're hearing, we hear building department's concerns too, and somewhere in the middle is gonna be the truth. And they have their opinions, and we don't know the full story yet. We're gonna get briefed on it, and, and we'll see where it goes.
Now, I'm very surprised that I didn't get copies of any of the paperwork.
I'm pretty sure, when I talked to Donna the other day, you had asked for copies. Those copies, copies cost you money. She specifically asked you if you were gonna pay that amount. She has those in her office, when I visited her yesterday. So those, those copies are in our office, and we need to visit her during normal business hours and pay the fee for the copies. And then you can pick up everything she has, and then we'll have every document.
Yes, I, I have the check with me on this thing, she's not here.
Yeah.
I've just been straight up busy.
Yeah, I understand, we're all busy, but I'm just letting you know, she made me aware. You had reached out to her for a copy of everything, and that's in her office, so.
Great. We are, we are, thank you. Thank you for coming in, and we will hear you.
Thank you.
Okay. Lee, you gonna help us, walk us through the warrant, Jamie?
So what you have in your packets, I did not print everything over again. I did the closing in on the finer numbers that we discussed prior previously. And so I just want to go through the warrants on our, our quick review. Public hearing is scheduled for next Thursday, weather permitting. With snow date on the phone on Thursday, so we're gonna be looking okay for that. If you want to just go through the warrants real quick, once again, I've added one additional warrant after request of the fire team.
You heard about that?
It did not change any impact.
Barely.
Which, let's start, where are you on four?
If we go to article five.
Project, so five.
So there's been no change there. The board will vote on the warrant after the public hearing next Thursday, so that will be included then.
Six is fine.
Six is the same, transfer station deposit from capital reserve, no change. Seventy thousand, there's no change, the board decided to up that.
Well, you're on that. John, did you see what we did there? We dropped down the transfer station by five and dropped down the highway by five and upped yours from sixty to seventy. Give a little benefit, they, we've done that for the other departments in the past.
We also had, we, we're gonna ask for the board to second to be one of those agents.
No, that's something that has to be done anyway.
Right, but the thing is, as agents to, be, if something came up mid-year, we could, we could buy, we use your funds. And based upon your recommendation, we added that to get permission from the legislative body so we can do that.
So article seven is seventy thousand, article eight is to point one selectman's agents to, to expand from the existing five car emergency vehicle cameras, there are no impact.
Nine is the new one.
Nine is the new one, I kept them together, seeing as that they were fire product related.
No, hold on.
Yeah.
John, you spoke about that last year, and you bought one as a grant.
What's that?
That stretcher, the electric stretcher, you came into CSR.
A couple of years ago, we, we bought the stretcher, and it was a two-part system, but.
Was it two years ago or was it last year you bought?
No, it wasn't last year.
No, it was two years ago at least.
No, we tried to find it in the.
So when you came and saw this last year, this is the one you were talking about? You came in and met us this year.
Not this year, not on the stretcher, we had the stretcher for.
But you came in, you came in and talked about getting one, it was hard to lift up for people.
Yeah.
You came in this year and talked about that. Was that to buy this one? No, this is new.
We bought the stretcher a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And now we're looking to buy the particles in the ambulance that actually loads the car into the ambulance. It's a two-part system.
Oh.
Cost about forty thousand, and both, we decided to hold off on the ambulance side of it because we're, hopefully, we're gonna buy a new ambulance in two years, and we just get it incorporated into the purchase for new ambulance. But that didn't happen. And we didn't get the ambulance last year, we're gonna hopefully go for it next year, but now the ambulance is a day, two years to build, so we're looking at three years before we get one that comes with the ambulance, so.
So is this what you talked to us this year about when you came?
I never talked to you about this.
It wasn't two years ago you talked to me about it, I would never remember.
Yeah, we had that factor going, we do, right?
Yeah. So is it, is it, is it a device that's reusable and is new?
Right, so we'll be able to move it over when we get a new vehicle, or we held off because we think, well, two years, you know, we'll get by. But, you know, it's just, someone's gonna get hurt getting the car in the ambulance. You know, lifting is the most difficult part of an ambulance service. You have to get the patient on the car, there's a mental issue, floor, bed, couch, ground, whatever. Now, when you get them on the car, you get to the truck, the truck's up here, the cars that are in. So before, it was all manual lifting of the patient, yeah, patient one hundred pounds, four hundred pounds, whatever. You gotta get the patient up to the truck level. On nine out of ten, they don't line up, trucks, one in the car. So now, two years ago, we bought the electric one, so now we get into this position by just pushing the button. So we get into the truck now, and we gotta lift the front wheels into the car, come around the back, and you have to pick out the car to raise the wheels. So that's the weight of the patient, and the car weighs a hundred and forty pounds, because of all the mechanism, electric, piston, and everything. So you're holding a two-hundred patient, the outpatient becomes three hundred pounds. So you have to lift them like this and then push it into the ambulance. While we get to the hospital, it's just reversed. You pull the ambulance, the car out, you're holding three hundred pounds, draw off the wheels, which then takes the weight.
I, I view it as a safety item for your crew.
Oh, definitely. I mean, back injury will lead to EMS.
You're saying you'd never get me in the ambulance? I got tractors in the barn, John.
We'll get you in, it just. So this mechanism is, they're the same brand, they, they're, like I said, a two-piece system. So now this arm comes out of the ambulance, goes underneath the car, picks the car up, and brings it right into the truck. So there's no manual.
As long as you can use it again.
Yeah, obviously extremely expensive, they're twenty-five thousand and some change.
Plus you gotta mount it.
And the, and the cost of mounting.
John, let me ask you this, we put the fire truck pretty much at seventy. What will that break his fund to, do you know?
This is the.
I'm talking about, I'm talking, no, I'm not talking about the ambulance, but I'm talking about the fire truck fund.
Okay. Capital Reserve, you want it out.
From three hundred.
Yeah, I had over two hundred, I think.
Three fifty or something, I thought of it.
It was two sixty or two eighty or something.
Correct.
But this has come out of the ambulance fund, which is a different, this one.
Oh, you're taking it all out of your fund already?
This is one that the treasurer holds.
It's coming out of the special equipment fund.
Oh, okay.
That the ambulance money pays for, and that's around three, two-something, right?
So there's no impact to the board's funding at all?
No, it's just letting us take that money.
You did come and talk to us this year, John. I'm gonna find the meeting minutes and show it to you.
I'm on this.
John, you'll be able to speak to Zetelme?
Say what?
You'll be able to speak to Zetelme?
Okay.
A keyword, keyword is safety.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna prevent a back injury, one back injury.
And you don't have enough depth in your crew as it is.
Yeah, that's the thing, in daytime, we end up with two people sometimes, and left not heavy patient.
So that's the fund he's talking about, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand as of December thirty-first, we're gonna bank.
And how much do we have in the fire truck one?
The fire department is a capital reserve, and that one is. I've got the December statement.
We took a hundred out of that tank or something.
Oh, yeah, that's why I was down to that.
Yeah.
Oh, we just used their go-for money to buy two of these units, which is fifty, because they had fifty in that go-for money we received. So they spent theirs.
The fire department, right now, is, December has two hundred and eighty-three.
Eighty-three, so.
Seventy, three fifty-two.
We wrote three fifty. Yeah, the only other thing is, I know the chief just sent over a thing for grants. They're looking for fifty and older improvements.
That's not, I'm sure, I put on the, the link, the order, explain about it.
I, I sent him back an email for, you know, maybe to use this new building as a warming center, maybe we'd get them to do the, and the cooling center, maybe get them to pay for the heat NAC on that second floor, or, you know, maybe a backup generator or something. He seems to want to apply for the grant, so I'm gonna work with him towards that, but you don't think we'd be able to add that to the grant at all, or?
I don't think it'd be specified enough, right? That's grants seem more.
So is A, A, R, P.
They left it very vague, I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that would, I'd agree to refuel that grant at personal, but I don't, I don't think that would be.
It was for benefits of the town, and they were looking for things. It was for benefits of the town, and they were looking for things like fifty and older to help out.
Yeah. All the places housing, transportation.
They need that distraction.
We, your crew is getting up there in age, so.
Oh, that's the thing, we're not getting any younger and.
So it might work.
Patients aren't getting anywhere.
We'll leave it in for a warrant and we'll put it in for the grant too. And we can put the money back in your ambulance.
Exactly.
So it's a, it's a, it's a, something we could try.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll leave the warrant in there, John, and if you do get a grant, we'll probably not handle this one.
Time frame, I agree, cause it's something we're like.
End of March, I think, right?
Yeah.
But the, the grant master writer is uh, is chief, Bregman Art, he's, he's, he's slick when it comes to writing.
He's not so mild.
See what he thinks about it, cause I'm gonna talk to him about, you know, maybe doing heating and cooling center in this building, see, I love a. Building with all the appropriate uh ADA functions to put people out and save the schools functioning and.
Just emailing me about possibly needing opening up a lawn sign cause of the weather coming through.
I'm already posted on the site.
Video?
Yeah.
All the storms, so. Who knows, but it seems like a, looks like it'll be a short-lived event, so.
Yeah, which is great.
So if it does happen, it does, but we've still gotta plan.
Well, thanks for coming out for the explanation, alright? I'm gonna pull those meeting minutes.
Figure out what you're hearing, Jamie.
It was at the end of the meeting, we were kinda talking about general stuff.
Yeah, actually, we just discussed it last month, we really, uh. Because like I said, we're gonna hold off, but, you know.
Two years is long down the way.
Yeah, it's too long away, someone's gonna hurt their back in the.
No, I, we, we fully support that, and if you have the funds in there.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we originally was gonna buy the whole system, but then we said, I have two years, we'll get the new ambulance and then we'll have it, but. You know, two years turned into three years, yeah.
If you didn't have the funds in there, it'd be a tight sell.
Oh, yeah, 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 so, uh, you know, it's extremely expensive, I mean, the car was eighteen thousand dollars and this thing was twenty-five, so the whole package was. Like forty, but they're definitely worth the money in the long run, if you look at one.
Injury.
One injury, back injury, what that would cost.
The fact that you're gonna get forty more years out of it, you know, there ain't be less.
Yeah. It's a pretty new system.
Okay. Thanks, thank you again for coming.
When I put that to the law, sorry for leaving out, well, that's.
Well, sorry. Liam loves that.
Alright, so that's pretty much the only change in the warrant, it added another warrant, so all the uh proceedings.
We gotta finish them.
Yeah, our article ten has no change, ten thousand dollars into the police private capital reserve. Last week, the board asked me to separate the two thousand nine twenty-five from the sale of the vehicle in twenty twenty-two, so that's article eleven. That look right to you, Nick?
Yeah.
And then article twelve now is the purchase and withdrawal from different funds. Uh, total purchase is fifty-three, seven, one, seven. Uh, then withdrawing twelve thousand nine twenty-five from the police vehicle and equipment capital reserve fund. And then further using twelve thousand from the police special DTM revolving fund. With a uh tax impact for twenty-eight thousand nine seventy-two or seven cents on the tax. Um, article thirteen is a twenty thousand dollar deposit.
That twelve thousand is just about everything up to that?
In the reserve, yeah, it was only like, it was only like four hundred dollars.
Okay. Will be.
Um, article thirteen is twenty thousand dollars deposited into the highly capital reserve that the board approved, five cent impact. Article fourteen is the five thousand dollars that we're going to add to the lien purchase capital reserve that's been on the books, but we've kind of forgotten about it. So you're adding a little bit of funding there, it's a penny impact. And number fifteen is the milk oil grant, uh, there's no intent to taxes, this is um receiving a grant for thirteen sixty and withdrawing thirteen sixty from the milk oil capital reserve.
Okay, sixteen?
Our uh article sixteen is currently twelve dol, sixteen dollars of change in fund, this has been on the books since nineteen eighty-eight. The cemetery, the existing cemetery trustees have depleted most of it, and the only way to close it out is to uh.
Place your money.
Yeah, and that's what we have there, and that was recommended by the attorney. Next one is the request from the.
Wait, the actual question?
Yes.
It says to pay to the town treasurer.
Yeah, they'll just go into the general fund, you'll get sixteen dollars more.
Twelve dollars. Sixteen, yeah. So wouldn't it be to the general fund, to the town treasurer?
She handles all the funds, that's why it has to be written, cause she, uh, the tax revenue, the vehicle revenue, theoretically, if they didn't go to the bank. They're ordered to hand their funds to the treasurer.
Okay.
So, but she delegates.
So, the original one said to the general fund, I think the attorney turned.
Attorney.
The attorney changed it to the town treasurer.
Yeah.
That's right.
Cause all of our funds are held in the tech, with the town treasurer. Uh, article seventeen is request from the cemetery trustees to establish a new uh expendable trust that will be for cemetery monuments. For additional maintenance, upkeep of cemetery monuments, benches, cornerstone, and appoint cemetery trustees as agents to spend. And to further authorize with the acceptance of privately donated gifts, let's use the.
And as you recall, we, the RSA was along originally to that, we have an RSA.
Correct, yeah. And he said anyone can establish an expendable trust by this RSA thirty-one ninety nineteen, but if it's written specifically in a certain way, then it has to be spent that way. So whereas the uh expendable trust that they had established under the RSA two eighty-nine, that was specific for cemetery plots. So this gives them the authority, and basically on an annual basis, depending on the year, we might see uh two to six to eight hundred dollars in monuments or cornerstones that might get sold. They get deposited into the general fund, so basically what is happening now is eliminating the treasurer holding the money, doesn't lapse at the end of the year. And then he has the authority to negotiate prices, have a fee schedule set for purchasing these things.
Cemetery trustees.
Cemetery trustees, and then they would then deposit all those funds into this fund, and uh it would never lapse. Cause one thing that we found was happening is, he would purchase a cemetery bench uh as donated or purchased by an individual. And then the graving wouldn't occur until a year, two years, until the family could decide what they wanted to do with it. And there's an issue of those funds that he's collecting, they technically lapse unless we encumber them, and it becomes an accounting nightmare, so this. So that's gonna eliminate us from the picture of any of these funds coming through us and go directly into this expendable trust.
Eighteen, sister, housekeeping, where are the state?
Eighteen, yeah, they are law passed that the optional veterans credit needs to include um current serving and not been honorably discharged from armed services, so. And it's requirement by the state, if we do not put it on here, um even if it fails, the uh people that have applied in the past will continue to get their veterans credit, but it will be decreased in the dollar amount. So this is just to ensure that it's adding and expanding the um individuals that qualify for that.
And lastly, you got the two, uh, housekeeping ones nineteen and twenty, and do we have any uh public uh notice warrants at this time?
Next Tuesday's deadline, so if, if nobody shows up by four P M.
It's finalized next Tuesday, four P M.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then on the back page, it did list all the articles in order.
That's a hundred and eighty-two thousand seven ninety-two.
Oh, for the dollar amounts themselves?
Say again, Dave.
One hundred and eighty-two thousand seven ninety-two.
Okay.
For all the ones.
And those numbers get included on the MS, um, six thirty-six.
Very good. Okay, and now we're gonna move on, any more questions on warrants, Joe? Nope, here we're not moving up to the operating budget, no?
Okay, um. Warrant provided to in the DRA, second is the MS two thirty-two, along with the expenditures. I thought it might be a little bit easier for, um, we're at a point where we know the uh proposed budget is what it is. What the board has to decide on tonight is what you want to use for, to offset any increase for the twenty twenty-three.
Which one are you starting on, please?
I did not give you a new copy, did anybody bring the old copy with you?
I brought these.
The worksheet.
I didn't bring, I brought last week's. Budget worksheet?
Yeah.
Revenues?
Yeah, it's the big long one.
You want this one?
Yeah, this one here.
This one's expenditures.
This is, you want me to print them? I have it right here, I can put that.
Alright, just go ahead and print it.
Do you need this one anyway?
It's the public hearing one, the long one.
Yeah, December.
And on the back page, um, we had some numbers that we were looking at, and then I followed up with um. The auditor to make sure that what we were counting for in our. Um. Revenues was accurate, cause there was uh some concerns by you, Dave, that I'm double counting some revenues.
Yeah.
And on page, the last page is where we were at. The operating budget proposed is three million two eighty-one eight ten. The lapsing budget from twenty twenty-two is one thirty-eight seven seventy-six.
Yeah, so I said one thirty-eight, okay.
These have been updated, yeah. And then the proposed revenues that we had uh wanted to offset the increases, one million one twenty-nine oh four six. And then after last week's review, we, uh, the auditor, it was determined that um our projected revenue is lapsing or excess of the operating, um. And that would be here on this worksheet, you guys have to copy that. We go to the back page.
No, it was ready, cause you only had Sunday three thousand.
We had seventy-three here last week. And the new impact, a new change is two hundred and thirty thousand. Well, one thing I did notice when I didn't call the auditor back, but he has included a hundred percent of the ARPA money, which is three oh one. And if you look at the detail of the expenses, seven thousand has been expended from, for the uh SEPAC system. And that's included on the adjusted numbers that he had, we add into the system. So that, along with the three thousand dollars that you just reviewed through the warrant, for um the positive debt from surplus, the two thousand nine twenty-five. It's roughly ten thousand, so our lapsing revenues, two hundred and thirty thousand, this would give us a true revenue of two hundred and twenty thousand. And. Here I have no news.
So that should be on this revenue worksheet, which is S P U.
That's the, that's just the old one, what I, if we move it back, the one that's generated from the computer, that has uh. Is attached to the MS.
Yeah, two fifty, two five six.
Yeah.
She's having a crack at that.
But we've got, the one that's attached to the MS four three four R, which is what the DRA reviews, the lapsing number. On the, on the right-hand column, highlighted in yellow, page four, two hundred and thirty, two fifty-six oh one. This is the operating budget that hasn't changed, the only thing that's changing now, which has been updated on here, is the revenues from last week's review.
You just printed expenditures?
This is the public hearing worksheet, and on the back page, last page. Basically, it's a number that you guys have to decide on.
We have two numbers, uh, we have essentially excess revenues of two hundred and twenty thousand on my page, eight of eight, Dave. And right in the middle, lapsing from the budget is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven seventy-six.
Yeah.
And the thing is, we, this is where we make a decision, how much we wanna put towards lowering the tax bill, how much we wanna continue to make sure we maintain a healthy rainy day fund. And um, that's the decision we have to make. I, I'd like to make a proposal that it's, it's close to three hundred fifty-eight thousand seven seventy-six of total funds we have. I like that, I make a suggestion that we put at least another fifty thousand dollars into our rainy day fund to keep the percentage up. Because uh in the past, we kept it between four and five percent, close to five percent in the past. We now have a bond, so we have a liability on this, on our budget, a liability to be in the, the world bond. So I like to maintain a good, healthy balance, and then I, I can recommend we take two hundred thousand dollars of that, excuse me. Three hundred thousand dollars of that, and we can play that towards taxes.
Yeah, we should talk about.
I'm gonna double check a couple of numbers first.
Okay, and I think Justin also has a, like, we'll, we'll, we'll have to make a change for the potential revenues too.
Uh, yeah, after going over this stuff, um, looking at the numbers, just trying to, you know, adjust the tax impact a little bit more. Looking at the revenues for the town clerk on the licensing and board of vehicle and everything like that. I was looking to adjust that up to fifty thousand to seven twenty-five.
This is where we plugged in Justin's number, and that could be the decrease.
Cause it would decrease the tax impact by twelve cents, which I think is a significant amount of amount.
In other words, we underbudgeted the revenue projections from the town clerk in the past, and going back to twenty eighteen, uh, we've.
How close does it get in projections, if you go?
Well, do you have?
Yeah, he's got.
This is our last five years, if you were.
Yeah, that's the one that's going in the town report.
If you look at that, we were budgeting almost a hundred thousand dollars less.
Six seventy-five every year.
And I understand we do that just so we can get a surplus at the end of the year, but my idea is.
Twenty twenty-two is eight twenty-five.
Yeah.
What's in our budget?
Six seventy.
Six seventy.
What's the difference between those two?
One fifty.
Yeah, one fifty.
Yeah. So one fifty, you wanna change it by fifty, so we're still have a hundred left in revenue.
Right, so it's surplus.
It'd be surplus ended in the year if she has a good year, I'm just trying to divide, cause it makes a twelve cent impact.
I know, I'm not worried about the impact, but I wanna see. What will be left for basically excess revenue next year.
Right, I know, but I'm just trying to spread between the two years.
I understand what you're trying to do.
I, I think it's, it's, he's not.
She has the same year, I'm gonna see if uh.
Yeah, I'm looking at two hundred thousand, eight twenty-five is what's on the report.
Eight twenty-five, I know eight.
Okay, I rounded it, eight twenty-five, and then we have budgeted in six twenty-five.
Six twenty-five, six seventy-five.
Six seventy.
Six seventy-five, six seventy-five. So it is a hundred and fifty that we have been increasing our potential overage for, for revenues.
But you gotta realize too, the new houses coming in, it's gonna be, I don't know what it.
Some office that's there too.
Reg, registrations, dog licenses, things of that nature. Think three cent number potentially, and like you said, the economy potentially slowing down, but.
Keep, keep their own cars, yeah.
So that's why I think the proposal that justice makers, and not taking the four hundred and fifty, but just taking one third of that and adding it towards our revenues, and fifty thousand is a, I think, a reasonable amount.
Yeah.
We haven't touched that for almost five years now, since twenty eighteen.
Yeah, we've increased our budget, our, our increasing budget here.
This year's.
Is four hundred and ninety-eight, six fifty-nine over last year's. So it just.
I'm gonna agree with that, and the other thing, um, so we have consensus then?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna change that, uh, increase the revenue line by fifty thousand from the town clerk's office.
Okay, seven twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the bottom line on the revenues will now, um.
Okay, now, the next question, Dave, we have to ask is, of the, of the lapsing and of the excess.
This is what my thought was when you gave me your take on it.
Yeah.
Because of that additional income next year from additional houses, I think, um, this is kind of a tough year, cause we did up the. We did up the maintenance money and take care of a lot of problems.
Right.
Which next year, I can foresee us dropping that by at least fifty, maybe not a hundred, we get it by fifty.
Okay.
And with the additional revenue next year and that fifty, and maybe we're taking another fifty on, on liens, keeping our budget somewhat balanced. I think if we allow that revenue to go down, or, you know, cause it's gonna go down anyway. You, we had five hundred and forty thousand in there, now there's like four hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Right.
Alright, so there's about five hundred thousand dollars sitting there, without using any of that money, but not adding any to it this year. Next year, we can do a fuller add, because we're kind of using the money everywhere this year. And the only reason I wanted to do that, Mike, is to keep our tax impact down. So basically, if we're getting fifty from Justin, we know by doing another fifty from that.
That's twenty-four cents.
Twenty-four cents, we're looking at. Twenty-four cents, because we're looking at, we're looking at, uh, when we and I did the numbers yesterday, about ninety-eight cents. So if we take twelve and twelve, we'd be down to overall around seventy-five cents as an overall tax impact.
Plus the, this would be an increase, mine's a decrease.
No, on.
Other tax rate.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, mine.
So his is an increase because I was going to take the other fifty thousand out of surplus. You just gave us fifty back, I was going to take the other fifty out of surplus above and beyond what Mike said.
See, yeah, I see what you're saying.
So it's twenty-four cents, basically, and it's at ninety-eight cents, so we're going to be around seventy-five after warrants to the tax. You know, when they set the tax rate in October. Because when we did the overall budget, I was amazed.
Uh, wait till you see the school budget.
I know.
Yeah, did you see how much this is going to change of this? This will be down under probably four percent by next year. Because did you see how they calculate this four percent this?
I know, well, see what happens, just as, as your budget increases, the percentage goes down, money doesn't disappear.
It's just a percentage.
It's still that, well, it's still that four seventy-eight in there. I'm just saying it'll be, end up being under four percent by the time that.
Four seventy, four ninety-eight.
Four seventy-eight, six sixty-eight.
Alright, where are you seeing that number?
On this two thousand twenty-two worksheet that I printed over to Wayne the other day.
It's on the back page of the tax rate. I think I gave you.
It's on the, uh.
Twenty-two and twenty twenty-one.
Tax rate breakdown, very, very back page.
So you're saying, you were recommending.
I have five forty here.
That's twenty twenty-one, and then one in the front of it, there should be a few that's left. Look at the front.
Turn, turn, turn the whole pocket around. There's twenty twenty-one and.
Take them apart, they, they're paper cut together.
Twenty twenty-two, five twenty-one.
Yeah, so twenty, back page in twenty twenty-two has the.
Four seventy-eight, six.
So you're proposing taking fifty from there?
I, I'm, no. No, Mike was only using three hundred and around three hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus because he was going to put fifty back into that. I'm saying leave the four seventy-eight there, but apply three fifty towards our taxes.
Okay, come on, so I can, let's bring up to five hundred thousand, bring, maybe take twenty-five thousand there, just bigger than, like, half of, maybe, half of.
No, split it by thirteen cents.
Alright, where are we, where are we talking now? We're still using the last.
No, we're, we're just, we're just, we're just, we're just bouncing back.
We're just bouncing back, we're not even decided yet.
I just, I, I can plug them in here so you can get.
Look over here, Wayne, you've got one thirty-eight, two twenty.
Yeah.
So Mike and I are talking about how much to use out of it.
Yeah.
Mike made a proposal, use them three hundred.
Correct.
Okay.
And put in fifty and change towards our rainy day.
Okay, got you, okay.
And I was saying use all three fifty this year, because next year, we're going to have a decent amount of revenue next year at the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
We're not going to have as much maintenance to do, and we're going to be able to apply that towards that with our, with the additional revenue from our extra taxes as well.
Right.
I think we can buff that rainy day fund up. I just want to let you guys know that rainy day fund can be used to offset taxes.
Well, actually.
It's only, it's our town's money. Now, listen to this.
Yeah, it hasn't been done in the past.
We're making point zero 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 two percent interest on that money. So we have five hundred thousand dollars sitting there. All our buildings are insured. The only towns that have a larger amount than we have have big liabilities, and this town's doesn't have those type of liabilities. If our town should burn tomorrow, we have insurance for it. And the place we're covering.
The only liability we have, which we haven't had, is the world bond.
Even still with the five hundred, I think we have enough, we could get started before insurance kicks in.
Yes.
Where everything's insured, but we have enough money to get started.
Not just that, if you have an emergency like that, what you do is you call a general meeting.
Right.
We put a halt on the budgets and I select when we take it to there.
But, but I just don't want to, alright, as long as we don't touch the current.
Yes.
Reserve now, because I don't, previous selection have dropped, as you all know, have brought it down to twenty-seven thousand dollars, which was a sin.
And we brought that up over years, and so next year, I'm going to agree with you, Mike, let's fund it up to the five percent next year, so whether we put a hundred towards it or whatever.
Right. But that could be at the expense of taxes.
Something, we don't have to go to five percent next year either, we could just put, figure out.
Yeah, figure it out.
Next year.
No, right.
Always put something.
So, no, we don't, we don't touch the reserve, I mean, the rainy day fund at all?
Yeah.
Alright.
And so we'll put, we'll round it to three fifty and put the balance in the rainy day fund. I love that.
Alright, so it's three fifty-seven, two forty-two, so we'll use.
Three fifty-eight, seven seventy-six.
Alright, so that changes.
Yeah, on there, let's do that.
Okay.
Give you a little bit in there. And I'm looking at that, because I know we can pass it next year.
Okay, okay, but the thing is, what, at the same time though, um, here, here's the whole thing though. Our tax rate is growing, okay, and the thing is, here we are taking three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, and put it towards the tax rate. That's the same thing happened to the school, the state came in and basically offset the school's budget last year, and this year they're giving him zilch, or very close to zilch, and so now it looks like a huge increase. I can see next year, we have no more money left, and little dollars left to offset the tax rate because we want to put it into the rainy day fund, and all of a sudden, our tax rate goes exorbitantly high.
Ours isn't, the schools is.
No, but ours could go next year, next year could go high.
We're getting an increased building revenue.
Well, I, I have a feeling, I have a feeling, because we've budgeted our revenues conservatively.
I'm just doing.
We're going to be okay.
No, I, I.
A building maintenance, Mike, I'm hoping to go down by fifty, maybe a hundred.
I feel like we're pretty, pretty healthy.
Okay, no, I, I think so too. The thing is, I'm just, uh, I, I, I'm not doing this agreement with what you're proposing. I'm saying we've got to be cautious as we.
We may take a back.
Still a big chunk of money for the size of town we are.
We may take a back step and take a break on building maintenance next year, just to.
We may, we may be quite ready, because all we're, another fifty K next year.
Fifty or a hundred?
It depends where we are.
Right.
The roof's got to be replaced on three billions.
This one, we have numbers, this one's twenty.
Yeah. Okay, I think we have consensus.
Okay, can I just go over these numbers, so now, or, uh, revenues to offset?
Three hundred fifty.
No, the revenues to offset, um, I've increased the proposed revenue, which here it said it was one million, one twenty-nine. So now it's one million, one seventy-nine, oh forty-six. And then rather than the lapsing operating budget at one thirty-seven, you want to round it down to one thirty.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
So now that one thirty plus the two twenty, which we agree, because it's really two thirty, but ten minutes gone.
I'm just doing.
Will give us a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus to apply other than the projected revenues.
Yeah, between lapsing operating budget and revenues.
Correct.
And then, and then I want you to show on these, the seven thousand dollar added to the rainy day fund, so just get forgotten about right over here.
And fifteen. We're talking about four hundred thousand dollars.
Forty times, uh, that's eight times twelve, that's a good impact on the tax rate, that's great.
Alright, so now that brings the amount.
You can't do much.
No, that's pretty good. Well, we return the tax base money to tax for that.
So this now brings the amount to raise from taxes to one million, seven fifty-two, seven sixty-four.
So without bond, we're basically having a negative budget.
Yeah, because if I subtract the one seventy-nine.
Is that one?
Seven fifty-two.
Seven sixty-four is the new to raise from taxes. If I subtracted the bond, we could add one million, five seventy-two, which would be, um, a penny higher than last year, three eighty-eight. And last year it was, oh, three eighty-three, so just a few five cents more, without the bond. But we can't do that, we're obligated to that, so I have to take that out. So we're looking at seventeen fifty-two, seven sixty-four for the, uh, raise from taxes, that brings the overall, um, budget estimate at four thirty-two, two, uh, yeah, four hundred and thirty-two cents, and we add thirty-six cents for the warrant articles, comes to four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Thirty-six cents for warrants?
Yeah, I'm working with the thirty-six because this rounding with the seven, it just change, adjusts it slightly, but if you look and add it by calculator, it's thirty-six cents.
Twenty-seven, eighty-four, two ninety-seven, minus twenty-six, forty-five.
Name the question I have, so our budget is going up five cents.
Um, if I take out.
The line, I'll update on the line.
I did, no, I put, oh, you want me to take it out just to give you an idea of what?
Right, now, our operating, now there's, we're operating, our operating budget's going up by five cents, which is a very minimal increase.
Right, so what we were looking at on this large sheet is just the operating budget, um, uh, they go on.
On this last sheet we're doing now here, Lane?
Yeah.
What is the twenty-seven eighty-four, that's our actual new budget?
Twenty-seven eighty-four, that was before we just made some changes, yes.
As we, yeah.
Twenty-seven eighty-four, what, what sheet are you opening up?
On the last page, this worksheet.
The worksheet that we just looked at.
Yeah, it's total budget. What is the twenty-seven eighty-four, two ninety-seven? Total budget.
What you have to use is you take your actual and you subtract your last year's budget, which is the twenty twenty-two, uh, approved budget, and that our increase is.
Okay, that's what I just did in math, that's what I was just trying to do with Lane.
Yeah.
You took the twenty-seven eighty-four, two ninety-seven.
Yeah.
What is that number?
The last year's budget.
Last, that's twenty twenty-two's budget.
Okay.
Subtracted.
And twenty-six forty-five is what?
The actual.
Alright.
So.
And that's our one thirty-eight.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So budget and actual.
She cleaned up the numbers, it's really one thirty-seven.
And the four ninety-seven is?
The difference between the twenty twenty-three budget and the twenty twenty-two budget.
You're at three two eight one?
Yeah, that's what I.
You sure that's right?
That is correct.
That's correct, yeah.
Three two, thirty-two eighty-one, eight-ten, that's correct.
And that includes the bond.
And includes the bond.
Eighty-one.
One another, let me try to figure.
Ten, minus, you subtracted the twenty twenty-two budget or the actual?
You take the twenty-two budget.
Yeah.
And that's where the increase is, four ninety-seven, five thirteen.
Four hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Yeah, but a hundred and eighty is the bond.
Bond. So four ninety-seven, five thirteen, minus one eighty.
It's actually like one eighty-six or eighty-three or something like that.
It is one seventy, uh, the bond is one seventy-nine, seven sixty-nine.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Auditors do that all the time.
Three hundred and seventeen thousand, our budget actually went up over last year.
Yeah, and then if you look at the, the, this large sheet, which I need to update the last page.
So three hundred and seventeen, our budget went up without the bond, and we'll put three fifty towards our budget.
Right.
Because it should be lower than last year, uh, by one or two cents.
Um, I see what you're saying, so you're saying that if, if you're using apples to apples, take that increase.
It's only apples.
Subtract, subtract the bond.
Yeah, which I did, three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We're taking three hundred and fifty thousand off of that. Our actual operating budget is once we use the surplus and the excess funds. It should be.
If I took away the articles, the warrant articles, it would be seventy-seven cents and it would be a forty-nine cent increase, oh, I have to take out the bond, the, okay, let me take the bond out, one second here.
I, I know, you see what you're doing, Dave.
So I've taken out the bond and I've taken out the warrants, so our, it says five cents. Because the DRA adjusted the numbers, we were basing a number on this and what we projected revenues, but because we got additive revenues, it, this, um, three eighty-three would have been higher.
What three eighty-three?
Last year's tax rate for the town was three dollars and eighty-three cents for the town. But because the DRA found that extra money, a hundred and fifty, it gave us more revenue and it decreased our, our overall budget, our final budget.
I'm just taking the numbers that are in front of us here.
I know that.
So you've got our new budget, minus our old budget.
Yeah.
Minus the one hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Minus one eighty.
Or a hundred and eighty thousand, sorry. It's three hundred and seventeen thousand.
Three hundred and seventeen thousand, right.
Then we're taking three hundred and fifty off that three hundred and seventeen thousand.
Mm-hmm.
You can't have any positive cents.
No, you've got to add the warrants in that.
No, no, no.
No, she's doing it without warrants.
Right, right, I'm doing it without warrants, but the, we have an extra hundred and fifty thousand in this revenue, we projected one hundred and eighteen thousand, DRA increased it a hundred and fifty. So it reduced it, it even further, because we had posed a tax rate uh, based on these revenues and these, this expense, three dollars and forty cents. But then when the tax rate was set, it was three eighty-three.
What does that have to do with our?
With, with the warrant.
I'm not doing any more tax rate.
I know, but I'm just saying that you're using today's numbers with, with the inch, in, increase and then deducting, and you, you said it should be a negative, it should be a decrease, I would have to take the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the DRA gave us in October.
I don't know what you're tying the hundred and fifty to anything for.
When we proposed the budget.
Is this twenty-seven eighty-four, ninety, two ninety-seven our actual budget?
No, that, that was a budget, we did, spent twenty-six forty-five.
Twenty-seven eighty-four, ninety-seven was our actual budget.
Right.
Okay.
So you take the thirty-two eighty-one, eight-ten, subtract the twenty-seven eighty-four, you come up with four hundred and ninety-seven dollars, right?
Correct.
You subtract the hundred and eighty off of that. Right?
Mm-hmm.
What's that dollar now?
I, if I took away, the, the difference here, Dave, is this was a projection, and October we added another hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the projected revenues.
That would only bring it down.
I know, it would.
Why do you keep talking about it? I don't understand.
Uh, all I'm saying is the three eighty-three includes the warrant articles and, and the added revenues that the DRA gave us in twenty twenty-two. So it's not an, you can't exactly.
What three eighty-three are you looking at?
Three eighty-three is the operating budget, plus the warrants from twenty twenty-two.
Lee, I think what he, what he's saying is that.
Just take the numbers, write for me a chart.
He's looking at four ninety-seven, five thirteen, that's the increase of our budget, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you got that right?
Yeah, and theoretically, if you, if, you're saying that this.
That's our budget increase. Right?
Right, I'm, so, so here, right here is the proposal with all these changes that you just made, three dollars and eighty-eight cents. The DRA set the tax rate, it came in at.
Where are you looking at three dollars and eighty? Down here?
Right here. Three eighty-eight, because I've made your changes and taken out the warrants, because the warrants are up here. So it's three eighty-eight, tax rate was set at three eighty-three, and included the warrants, so it's a five cent increase. But I understand what you're saying, the four ninety-seven, theoretically, if you're putting, applying three hundred, there should be a, a decrease.
Three fifty. You're subtracting a hundred and eighty for that, for the warrants.
And takes on the three seventeen.
Then take three fifty away from it.
That leaves about thirty-four, uh, thirty, thirty-three thousand.
Negative.
Negative.
So you can't have a positive number there, I don't know what you're doing.
This is the budget that you're proposing, three million, two eighty-one, eight-ten.
Got it.
I just increased the revenues from one million, one twenty-nine to one million, one seventy-nine, so that's what I have here, subtracting the, the revenues. And then this is no bond, just so we can figure out what that increase would be. And then there, there we rounded the lapsing surplus to a hundred and thirty, and that's the revenue excess, so that's the operating budget, times your assessment, comes to three dollars and eight, eight, seven, nine, seven, so rounds to three eighty-eight. I know what you're saying, Dave, but you can't take what was set at tax rate and apply and get a de, a decrease from what's projected because the DRA made changes to our revenues.
To increase our revenues, it would only help us.
I know, it should help you, but this is what, uh, this, these are facts, Dave, they're right here.
I, I, Dave, if you look at the other sheet, I think this is a different way of looking at it, Lee, it's working here, this one here.
This one here?
Yeah, the thing is, we have a budget, we have the revenues, and then we have revenue change, adds another fifty thousand, it'd be one, one, it'd be seventy-nine.
Yeah.
And then we add, we offset it with two, basically, three fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's seventeen forty-five.
No, it's, no, it should be seventeen, it's a little more than seventeen, what's it, what's the revenues now from taxes? How much from taxes, Lane? Seventeen what?
Seven, from revenues, just revenues?
No, from taxes, in other words, you, basically.
Oh, yes, one million, five seventy-two, nine ninety-five, is what we need to raise from taxes.
Okay. No, 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 that's not right.
What are you looking at, Mike?
I'm looking at twenty-three.
Looking at your worksheet, Lane, this one here. The one where Justin.
Okay, the Justin just added some changes?
Right.
So here we have the three million, one eighty-two, I cannot, I can work on that one as well, there's your, there's your budget, three million, two eighty-one, eight-ten.
Got it.
Now I'm changing the one million, one twenty-nine to the one million, one seventy-nine. Now I'm changing the one million, one twenty nine to the one million, one seventy nine.
Correct. But you already have that in that number, because it's fifty thousand, not below it.
That's right. We're gonna have to take it out.
Okay.
And then we adjusted the lapsing to one thirty seven even, or one hundred and thirty even.
One, one thirty even, right. So from tax, I should have a number from taxes now.
From taxes equals sum. This, this, okay, I did not take out the bond, so I have to subtract, because you were trying to figure out what the true impact. So it's one seventy nine, seven sixty nine, I believe. Whoops.
Nope, one more time.
One seventy nine, seven sixty nine.
What are you?
One seventy nine, seven sixty nine, which is correct. All right, so to raise from taxes is one million, five seventy two, nine ninety five.
That's with the bond, without the bond?
Without the bond and no warrant articles.
Okay.
All right, so you take that times, di- divided by your, uh, assessment.
That's the wrong one.
What's that?
The, the, you put the bond in as revenue, didn't you?
No, I subtracted it.
Shouldn't it be a plus?
No, see, the bond, you take your budget, you subtract your revenues. I'm falsely taking the, the bond, because Dave wants to know what the operating budget is.
Cause the top number includes the bond.
Correct. And then lapsing revenue and the lapsing surplus. That brings you to five, and then if you take that, divide by those S U L. Uh, this divided by the twenty twenty two assessment times one thousand equals. Equals, oh, I did that wrong. One second.
How many cents did your fifty thousand dollars adjust it by, Lane? Twelve?
Divided by.
Sixty thousand minus point two four.
Times.
Leave you at thirty six cents. Thirty six cents.
Three.
Without your bond, your bond is thirty six cents, you're at zero.
I know what you're saying theoretically, but.
You take your, you got your estimated increase right here of sixty cents on your original proposal you sent us.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I, he gave you fifty thousand, I put another fifty thousand in.
Yeah.
That's twenty four cents, right? You take the point sixty cents you had right here at the bottom, Lee. Your estimated right here.
Yeah.
On your worksheet. You subtract that twenty four cents, it brings you to thirty six cents. You take your bond away and it brings you to zero. Your numbers should show.
You're not adding that fifty thousand, because that was in her numbers here. That's in the numbers.
They were in the numbers on that page, but not on this page here.
Well, I'm saying it should be in the sixty cents here.
On this.
There, not it, are they?
She didn't do that. This is our actual. This is your, this is what she asked you to do, and this is the real one.
Yeah, that's the one I'm looking at. That's sixty cents includes one thirty, seven, and then two twenty.
Right.
And we changed it to three fifty, and then we added that fifty.
Yeah.
And the revenue's up above.
So we only added fifty. We didn't.
So you're taking.
You didn't add fifty two.
No.
So they're, they're just some adjustment of twelve cents, that's what I was starting to tell you earlier.
Right.
So you're taking the point sixty.
One hundred and twelve. But you've got to adjust for that eighty seven, seventy six.
Point six zero.
It ends up being ten cents.
Is forty eight. Forty eight cents on this minus thirty six cents. It's twelve cents left to.
Plus you've got to realize the eighty seven, seventy six is about a penny to.
Right. So is that what you're coming up with now with your new paperwork, Lane? Is about twelve cents?
I have five cents.
No, five?
All right, I, I, I think when we work paper, we have a general consensus of what we want to do. What do we want to do?
You just would like to have a better idea. I mean, I'll give you the spreadsheet so you can play with it.
I know, but I think you just, we gotta clean up the spreadsheets.
Yeah, the piece that's missing here is that we've made changes based on what we had from last year's revenues. Which theoretically, I understand that they should go down, but it affected all the, the entire tax rate. Every piece of the tax rate. So if we're looking at twenty two ninety eight on the tax rate, that included other, uh, the local school went up.
Okay. Lee, I, I just, we'll give the guidance of how we want to do it and incorporate the changes into the spreadsheets. You know, we've got to clean the spreadsheet, okay?
What, what I am doing is increasing the revenues, fifty thousand.
Correct.
I'm gonna take away that number of the bond, and we've, the lapsing, we're all gonna use a hundred and thirty thousand and the excess revenues, two hundred and twenty.
Correct.
So it's raising taxes, it'd be one million, seven fifty two, seven sixty four.
Yep, and do a rainy day fund, apply that.
That's seven dollars.
If you do the sheet, the estimated increase would be fifty cents. Without the bond, it'd be seven cents if you did that.
So we're very close.
Close to her numbers.
Right.
But there could be just that adjustment of rounding the two, two pennies on the warrant article.
I did, I rounded the pennies down too, because the.
That's right, so you're at about five percent.
Five cents.
Five cents.
Five cents without the bond.
So five plus thirty six cents.
But.
Correct, the warrants, that's correct. Five cents plus the thirty six cents.
Cause what she did, she told us four thirty two was the tax rate. Four hundred seventy on that.
So it's about forty one cents.
Cause, yeah, because we, we added the fifty, we took out eighty seven, seventy six, about ten cents difference.
Okay, so four seventy eight, six six eight plus seventy seven thousand. There's a number right here.
We'll make sure we review the, uh, MS five thirty five when the auditor completes our adjusted numbers.
You had one thirty eight, seven, seven, six on the, uh, lapsing operating budget on this page. Is that number right?
No, it's one thirty seven, two forty.
One thirty seven, two forty three.
That's another one.
Seven, two, four, three.
Of which we're adding thirty seven, two forty three into the rainy day funds.
Yep, so I'm just adding that right now. Okay, Lee, I just, we have too many spreadsheets here, and I think the numbers are different on spreadsheets. I think we just gotta clean them up. And I think, cause I like to meet, I, I would like to meet with you before, uh, next meeting.
Okay.
Because I gotta be able to talk to this. You just gotta make sure everything matches for the D R A too.
Yep.
So we'll be a four eighty five.
It's gonna be a flowing number, right?
Oh, absolutely.
We'll be a four eighty five, having that one on there.
Right, which will still be a, a drop a percent because we haven't added.
So we've got to be a lower percent.
And the thing is, and we have the big, the big long pole in the tent. We have six million to be added to a revenue unequal.
Yes, it should be higher, but I'll just.
But we're conservatively budget, conservatively six million. That's going to be offset taxes for the town even more.
Right.
Okay, so we've gone over it all, I think, right, Lane?
Yes, we have.
We've done our warrants.
Yeah.
All right, that's next on the agenda.
School district.
I, I went to the school district meeting last night, and I just want to briefly mention that they had, um, three things. They talked about what, what caused the increase to go up. They said health insurance caught, went up a little bit. They basically had contractual obligations with the teachers, had a rate, had to give a raise. They had twenty more additional students to vote. And those, and those factors caused the budget to go up. They have to continue to make the two hundred and forty thousand dollars on their bond payment. We're on halfway through it. And, uh, but it was a very simple meeting, and, uh, but really there was very little latitude as far as what they could and could not do.
If you take that, the increase of seven seventy five, three fourteen, and divide it by our assessment, it's an, uh, increase on the school side by about nine and one.
I'll be able to deduct that thousand dollars from our budget.
Oh, okay. That's part of your building maintenance.
That thousand dollars, I corrected mine, and when they all collect, uh, collected from us this year, and they, we're grateful for that information. All right, any more on the school, any, any more ideas on school, or we can, or we can add the bond? Okay, thank you. Mailbox items, I need them, I don't have them yet. So many questions.
Thanks for all the copy. That's, that's too humble for us to read.
Yeah, all the attachments are in there. They have the, um, Lane.
There are the other one already. Oh, that one.
Yeah, you have the whole time. You know, maybe you have.
Okay, mailbox items? I've been wanting to send a folder for mailbox, so.
Town forest lots?
Yes, exactly.
And we did a nice report. One policy, seven.
Just from our forester?
Yeah. No, that, well, that's, that's a felony especially, report.
Okay.
The town forest report, and this is your.
Good question, yeah, thank you. I'm not gonna read it, just looks well done.
But that will include the town forest lot and the vault.
Nice.
I think that's required, right, for some of the, the town forests that are being, uh, depleted of sand and stuff. We got to, what is it called, uh?
Well, that's all, all of the town forest.
All of them, okay.
A management plan.
Okay.
So, so the people that come after us know there's a management plan, okay. Maybe this year you do that, maybe this year you do that, and so there's a plan, okay, now, at least we never had it.
Well, I do note Charlie Lou donated that lot on Timbuktu.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna move on, Dave?
Yeah.
We got a conquered regional solid waste cooperative, we got contract.
What's that? Non-adjunct contract, something actual?
No, it's, it's, it's pending.
Yeah.
Which will slide, you might have to be aware of that. I think there, there's a narrative report. Um, and I think we all should read and be aware.
I think I've sent that to, like, the, like, every buyer from Delta.
I think this is, uh, this is regarding the Mr. Berth's, um, concern this, this point. There's two sides of the story, that's why I wanted to say, I think, uh, that's where the judicial system may be involved with that one to figure out which, which is telling truth and which is not telling truth. It's somewhere in the middle, I think.
This contract is just an additional amount that we added to it, I don't know what that was.
Well, that's actually the one that we're going to get.
We're getting it. That's without, um, the one who conquered.
Does the wind, wind loss?
So what amendment did they make to that?
That is, um, they changed us from just this, what do you explain it for these two sides? One with towns that use trash and recycling and the one that doesn't, that's part of the co-op, but doesn't get involved with trash. So that's changing us to both sides, using it more.
Yeah, we'll turn that to you next week. Uh, just thought you know, I updated the second message and report. I chatted with you on the phone, both of you gentlemen, just to add this little information to it, just, really, just tweaked it a little bit. I had the, uh, drywall people.
Okay.
For request. I also give kudos to, uh, Woody and Lee for, uh, some of the work they did. I'll, uh, quickly act and get a contract, uh, request for proposals. I'll quickly save some dollars for the town, like, I'm sorry, trash people. All right, um, I'm gonna open up to.
You saw the letter from the town hall.
Yes.
Recreation private. That was a copy.
Yeah, we talked about it last week.
Yeah.
So, there, just to read, read the narrative from the county inspector, town hall, read that.
We have it.
Okay, public comment?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Um, I think the board, just so cool as Lee, should be commended for, you guys might have differences of opinion, but you hashed it out, come up with a consensus. The board, all four of you seem to work good together. I'm glad to see that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, also, concerning the town hall, I spoke to Dave the other night. Um, none of you guys were here at the time, Lee might have been, but you remember the Grange veterans' flags they used to hang up in that town hall on, on second floor? Do you remember those?
Yeah, where did they go?
Oh, I know. I have.
Okay.
Uh, they've been rolled up in muscle cloth for thirty years, since the, since the ceiling, since the ceiling came down, they've been pinned on. And, uh, we're not hiding them. We're trying to be, preserve them. I don't want to see them go back up there.
What does the flag represent for the?
They, well, when I first came to town, they told me it was a war veterans. And I said, that makes any sense. The number of stars on the flag, there's one from World War One, one from World War Two. And, uh, they were the Grange members' veterans from the wars. And, and, cause the star range used to mean up there, I'm done by them.
Okay.
And these be one on the east wall, hanging one on the west wall. And the problem is, uh, the one hanging on the east wall, it gets the late afternoon sun, it's, it's a setting in the west. And it's deteriorating the flag. That's from nineteen seventeen, that flag. And two, five foot by nine foot. And when they, uh, back in the eighties, when the, we took, because the American Legion was supposed to be the caretakers of them. And one of them members was gonna hang them in the barn, and I just don't get it. So my wife rolled them up in muscle cloth to protect them. We brought them down years ago to Lowell, Massachusetts, where they repaired flags and stuff, and, uh, they wanted three hundred dollars just to unwrap it. We don't do anything, so. So we're talking about, would do something like that and, uh, you know, preserve it.
Sure.
Plexiglas and Donald Dunn says the problem you can't do is plexiglass, is it gives up fumes and deteriorates.
Material.
The material. And the nineteen seventeen flag was handsome, all the stars on and everything else. So, uh, until they can work a solution, they've been rolled up under our bed, so to keep them in the dark and stuff. But, uh, I would like to see if we can ever get them back up there. Both of them hang on the west wall. Cause the morning sun's not gonna get at them, the southern sun's not gonna get at them, and the sunny sun will, won't, can't be on the other wall.
I don't have a problem with that.
No.
Make sure we can maybe get some.
Yeah. Glass, uh, glass. I just wanted to let you guys know, okay, cause you knew we're in town than us, where they are. So they can go back up there.
That might even have been before me, friend.
We did that for the two fiftieth, uh, quilt, right?
Yes, we did the quilt. We preserved it.
Yes, yes. And we had one display when, uh, the, the original town hall committee was, uh, trying to get raised money. And we put them up there, opened them up to show people what they are. And I had a lot of names, all those stars. And I tried to, uh, go to the state range, because supposedly Dunbar's grage records are in the state range and hooks it, near Wilby store. And every time we go to places locked up, nobody around there. And I tried to get ahold of the president at the time, but he would never get back to us. So.
Does the Grange have anything to do with, you know, how the lots used to be set up in range ways?
No, that was, uh, the Smithsonian provided to the, to early on in the town ranges.
Yeah.
But they were like a, a cultural group.
Yeah.
And a lot of people said, well, they're, you know, they're.
Cause you see a lot of name halls.
They're like, like a four H, but mainly the farmers in town at the time, you know. And, uh, they were a, a select group, but that was part of our history, you know?
Yeah.
And one of the last members in, in there is Fred Mills, was one of the last members of that.
Wow.
It's a little bit of history which, uh, we don't want to list again.
Yeah, I, I just want to see if they, they can get back on the display.
I think we, I think we have consensus. Yeah, I think we can make it happen. We'll, we'll make sure we get an appropriate display for it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I want to do one more thing, um, before, I want to call the town, uh, transformation manager.
All right. I'm gonna be on speaker, right? I told him to have his phone.
Hello?
Hey, what are you, aren't they, we're at the select meeting now, and, uh, we want to talk about Saturday. There's been, there's been some proposals that we, uh, uh, closed Saturday. Gulfstown's already closed due to the weather. I mean, you're guys out for ten minutes, you have a ri- risk, a risk of frostbite for ten minutes outside on Saturday morning. And then, uh, we did too, some talking about, you know, having it open, but just having you guys stay in the heated facilities. And do streamline, no, 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 um.
Recycling.
Recycling, just take, just take trash, single stream for Saturday morning.
What are your thoughts?
What are your thoughts?
Uh, one or two days, I mean, we can close. I don't have a problem doing that. The only concern I have is getting notice help to people. And I want to make sure my guys get paid, that's all.
Your guys getting paid?
Obviously, they don't make any money if they don't work.
No, they will get paid regardless. It'll be like a snow day. I just, we're con, we're concerned, concerned about the safety. We're, we're concerned about frostbite.
Right, no, no, I get that, I totally get that.
Unless you have another proposal that you'd like to do.
I don't have a problem closing.
You think you want, do you want, you, you think we get too much pushback from the public?
Yeah, I think we're gonna get pushback no matter what we do. I think if, if we stay open, then people complaining that we kept our guys out there, and it slowed down, kept people working. If they close, we're gonna get pushback then we close, it's a double edged sword.
And then, and then we'll get pushback, cause we put single string too.
Okay, so, let's close, Woody, can you put a sign up there tomorrow and we'll have Lynn through on the town website?
I'll do it tonight.
She'll do it tonight.
I can, yeah, I can pop it up down on the committee page.
Yeah.
Cause it's due to the extreme weather conditions.
Yeah, we're not the only ones doing it, so.
Employees that we close for Saturday.
Gulfstown's already done that.
And there's one down, down by Milford that's.
Milford's already closed too.
Five towns and they.
Okay.
They support five towns, the thing is, but, yeah, you're right, we gotta get the word out, uh, use social media as, as a.
Can you have Chris put on his too?
Chris will put on the police station one, and we'll, we'll try to get on the uh, the bulletin board out here too, Lynn, can we get that?
Yeah, I can get there and do it.
Okay.
Call W M R if you want.
Oh, I can do that, I, I have the.
I don't think we need it.
I don't know.
No, I can't, we can't afford to get one person get frostbite, that's, 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 we just don't want that to happen.
Right, no, I, I totally get that, um, you know, like I said, you know, it's a, whatever comes to us, it's a double edged sword, and I know what we do. You, you, you're in a, right or you're wrong, we're, we're not gonna make everybody happy.
If you're not there, you can't get home and have.
There you go.
So just put a sign up at the transfer station so the public can see it tomorrow, going by.
And the thing is, it's a hazard, it's a uh, inclement weather day, that's how we're calling it.
Right, I wanna put on the social media pages, all this, we'll put that, you know, due to the extreme weather conditions.
Right.
It's unsafe for the employees to be.
Outside, for, for minutes, that's unsafe for me out there for eight minutes.
Right.
Now hopefully it's not forty.
Okay, thank you Woody, I just wanna, we wanna get you involved in the decision and uh, we appreciate it, well, you do your job and get the social media out, and uh, Lynn will start on hers uh, with the websites.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, and I'll send the message out to the guys as well.
Hey, please, thanks.
Let the mother get paid.
Yeah, let, let the mother get paid, so don't go and worry about it.
Right.
Okay, bye. Okay, got that done.
That offsets the snowy days, Lynn, you guys get to leave, and while we're, you know, get paid.
No, yeah, that works, yeah.
Helps a lot.
Like you said, hopefully it's just a, hopefully the weather will got them, forecast right.
If it's, if it's really not.
If it's my cat, then we're screwed. Damn if you do, damn if you don't.
Alright, um, public comment now, we're at Lynn, town administrator.
I'm also. I am.
I don't want to.
Okay.
Okay, just uh, let you start.
Um, I have updates for the town hall.
Okay, uh, wait a minute, wait a minute, before you begin, have you expended money without helpless?
Uh, yeah.
But it was tied up all day, is that today, you had all day all day?
Um, the first thing I wanna start with, I'll take it by order, I met the electrician over there, um, Monday morning.
Okay.
And that panel still hasn't come in from the other vendor. Again, he canceled it for the second time from them, and is going with the square D panel. It was supposed to come into his office today, they're gonna start installing that Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
That's the new panel down in the basement. Um, and while he's here, he's gonna have other guys doing all the odds and ends, the light covers and caps and all the other stuff.
No, it's closed, it's okay, safety.
And um after going through all that stuff with him, um, back in my home office on Tuesday, the telephone company transferred over to fiber optic. When they did that, they got an error code on the fire alarm. They were told to reset the fire alarm, that didn't clear the error code. We then had the electrician call the alarm company, BK Alarms, and put the new alarm that we paid almost six thousand dollars for. They then told the electrician that we're gonna have to, uh, cause it's a fiber optic line and not a copper line, that we're gonna have to do a cellular uh, receiver on the alarm. And that was fourteen hundred ninety-five dollars, or fourteen hundred fifty dollars, and five hundred ninety-five dollars to monitor it per month. Plus, if we didn't have good cellular coverage, then we're gonna have to put in talent in the building. And I said, something does not sound right, I said, we've just put that panel in, and we have two other builders working on fiber optics with those same BK alarms in them. So, long story short, this telephone company is providing a um the telephone line is providing a um, what do you call it, a dial tone. Whether it's copper or fiber optic, it should not matter to that alarm. So, long story short, the alarm wasn't working, and to get it to work, BK alarms told us to take one of the batteries out, because it's a battery backup, and take the power off. Turn it back on, and it would work for the night on the old copper line, and we'd take care of it in the morning. In talking about that, telephone company, now once we can ask the phone with the electrician at BK Alarms, that tomorrow morning, they're gonna hook the fiber optics backup to that same shutdown, not a restart, and see if it works and sure enough, did. So, that whole mess, getting four or five people involved was all for nothing.
To, to, to one another two thousand bill.
It did work, so, I'm not sure BK got communication wrong or what, but it was really a cluster for quite a while, but anyways, the alarm is up and running, it's on fiber optic, the grid has been converted.
Okay, great.
Then um I called and asked the uh, I met with Woody over there Monday as well.
Yeah.
Went through all the stuff, they cleaned up two and a half loads of stuff upstairs, some to the dump, some to be put in the containers. Um, basically leaving the old chairs up there, the piano, the piano benches, any of the things we need for just the functions up there. I left a few single chairs up there in case we had a meeting, and a couple of tables.
Okay.
Everything else pretty much been cleaned up from there, all the wood, the excess, the metal pieces, this and that. The stuff that's left up there is the contractors', and they'll be out next week. Downstairs in the basement, they cleaned up the wood, they just broom swept it, they didn't vacuum it.
Okay.
And downstairs, they cleaned up the wood, um, and looking down there, the superior um, sprinklers.
Yes.
Has piping down there. I asked if you wanted us to bring his pipe to the dumper, if he'd rather come pick it up, he wants to come pick it up later on.
Okay.
So he's scheduled to come get his pipe out in the basement. Um, so that'll be taken care of.
Woody moved all that stuff up there, on the container, do you remember?
Yeah, so, um, all work, we get left really for work down there, there's a couple odds and ends for Woody's guys to get out of there and clean vacuum up on both the upstairs and the.
What floorings could be done on, you think?
I asked Woody to make a list of the stuff he was putting in there.
Yeah, he did.
So we would know, instead of having a pile move from one place to the other.
So then, um I went through the schedule with the architect.
Right.
And said, a lot of, cause I pushed her off four weeks in a row now, doing the walkthrough, waiting for this.
Punch list.
Panel.
Yeah.
So we decided to go ahead and meet today at night, we met with Bobby from Chacoine's office, the tennis buyers.
He's a, he's a business manager.
Yeah, Caroline and myself, we walked through the whole building, and Caroline did a complete punch list of things they thought should be changed or touched up or done this and that, so, she's providing that to Chacoine.
He's gonna take it, replace the tile finish.
And then, they'll do another walkthrough, she had some, some different things that she picked up on, some things were just housekeeping and some things will be generally put all the cover plates on, cause the electrician still had that to do. Um, but she was more specific on a couple other items, and she's gonna give that to them.
Okay.
She found that those wall sconces were supposed to be seven feet to the bottom of the globe, and they're down around six feet, so they're gonna move those up.
Okay.
So they're not, you're not walking into them. So, um I'm hoping another week and a half to do the arctic's final walkthrough. As soon as um, the, all the electrical's done, and they've tested the fire alarm system, which um, or the sprinkler system, which has nothing to do with them and the elevator, they're gonna release the building to us to start our one year warranty under substantial completion.
Okay.
So, I'm thinking a week and a half to two weeks, that will happen. So if the electrical load gets done in there, I think we could do a soft opening, load a grand opening, to allow Mary to start using her first floor.
That's right.
Okay? The second floor, the drywall was moving in next week. Okay, so he's gonna load it with drywall Monday or Tuesday next week, it's gonna be hung next week, the week after it'll be taped. Then we'll have to get a painter in there to paint the walls. And then pretty much the room will be all done.
And they're clean.
Cleaned and ready to use for, and then we'll take the floors on a different step. We could have a grand opening without finishing the floors, um, or we could, if, if we can get it done at a reasonable time, then we could have, but I wanna have it.
What's your current target, hotel meeting day?
Okay, it's March.
Yeah.
It's coming right up.
Mm-hmm.
What was, what was my estimate, take the first?
But it sounds like it's pretty close.
Yeah.
Cause it's two weeks.
You've got to remember that drywall and the floors and all that stuff, that's above and beyond.
Oh, that's not the, that's not, no, no, that's all extra.
So once that building can be, once the drywall gets.
The benefactors are gonna do the floors.
They are gonna do them, so I don't.
The elements back in. The staircase?
No.
Can be next time.
Okay. The staircase needs to eventually, I mean, I'm talking about the greatest staircase.
Unless it's on the whole of our budget.
On the front hallway, yeah, that'd be nice to do.
Or, or they could do a fundraiser for it, like.
Okay, okay, so the, the only floor's gonna be done on the one in the main meeting room?
Yeah.
Okay.
So at one point in time, when we get it to where we think it's, you know, Woody's guys can vacuum it, we can clean the floors, we can set the chairs up, cause they're all dusty. We could have a grand opening up there if you wanted to, like.
Yeah, I, I think we should, I think the town, townsfolk would like to get up there and look around.
Just to look around, yeah, because the sound system's not gonna be in and whatnots.
Nope, just have a grand opening and have it done, so they can get up there and walk through it.
How do we do it here?
Okay. So that's where we are with everything.
Sorry?
Get some refreshments out of there.
No refreshments upstairs. Yeah, so we carry and carry on.
Carry and carry on.
We're gonna do it on.
There is one thing I, I would like to um, get approval from the rest of the board on. There are three outlet bulb outlets on the right side, and a couple miscellaneous outlets. Um, the electrician has tested them, and with all the switches on, there's no power to them. I'd like to have a electrician, even if it's not him, come up and remove those things from the wall, so the drywall can go over them.
Did you see, uh, okay, yeah, now there's pull the wires or just seal the wires so they can't be.
They, they, they cut off all them wires when the ceiling got light up there.
Right.
So there was no power up there on that second floor.
Doesn't we?
I found power down by the stage.
What, what do we need to do with the wires, do we just leave them there?
You can have it.
They can pull them or put them in a junction box.
Yeah, grab it.
So, I just would like to have that part done. It's not the drywall's job, it's not our other electrician's job, I, whoever I can get there to do it before the drywall gets hung is what I'd like to do that, to close that up.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm thinking, you know, it's, it's hundreds of dollars worth of work, it's not a lot of work, it's.
Okay, I, I have consensus, just to.
Yeah, I don't wanna spend the money, but I'm gonna have to go tell them this is what I need to do, but I'm, it's gonna need to be done right away.
You think we can get ahold of the electrician, just do that small job?
I think what we might do is call his maintenance, not the guys that do all the general work, cause they came right away. The guys that did your exit signs.
Okay, um, they have a maintenance guy?
When you called in to do the exit signs, that's a whole different division of Irish Electric.
Okay.
That's a service.
They were really professional, very.
Right, that was a service one, and they actually were more responsive, responsive.
Is that who we wanna reach out to?
Yeah, so the other thing I wanna tell you is, I wanna reach out to them for a couple of things. I wanna reach out over the panel over at the.
Fire department.
Fire department. And I'll meet them there with John when they're ready, but if you could set up the appointment.
The regional contractor never came through then.
Right.
Still.
And then, and then Lynn, there was one other thing I wanted to meet them for, what was it?
I thought it was just the electrical panel and five minutes.
Um, you have to move the heaters downstairs too, I mean, the uh, some downstairs with the plumber.
Yeah, I'll call him one more time.
Who's gonna take care of moving the, the lights up? And the, that, is that Irish Electric also, or something?
Oh, yeah, they have to, that's part.
That's probably.
It was on the plan.
Oh.
That's a good catch. So they have to plaster over the hole. It might be tight with the. No, the junction box, it's not.
No, cause the, the, they can't hide the junction box, so the wire will have to go up.
Have to run new wire, it's too short.
No, cause the wire's.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, so, so, so that's, they, they went, they went out with that.
Yeah, it should be an easy one.
There's still some, I was gonna say, it was adding with the.
So is this the same company that you wanna meet with for the fire department, electrical panel?
Yeah, Irish Electric, yeah.
But.
How you called last time was perfect, cause you went through their service.
Yeah, um, I've got the email to you.
And if they, if they would respond to us quickly, Lynn, I could show them the town hall right away to get that stuff done before the drywall gets there.
Yeah, cause you don't want, was that all out?
Okay, um, Fred, Fred.
Did you ever find any information about the sound system I mentioned to you? Well, let me rehash.
Yeah, rehash a little bit.
Okay, back when I was moderator, the school replaced the sound system, two sound systems ago. And the one that was in there was a good system, and they were gonna trash it, and I said, well, no you're not. We brought it over to the town hall, restored it at the base of the stairs, to be fu- future use for upstairs. In there, there was a remote microphone and three wired microphones, and the sound system worked good, I don't know if that's still there or not.
Wasn't there when I did any walkthroughs?
Cause I don't know what happened.
The, the good news is, we have, we have a benefactor who's putting a brand new sound system too, which is wonderful with the micros. Um, maybe you could reach out to Shelley and um, Mary and just see if they have heard of anything about it?
They would, they would know. This is even before Shelley was, I think, was secretary.
I know all the times I went upstairs and downstairs.
Yeah.
I didn't see it, the only room I haven't been in a lot is the locker room upstairs there, but.
No, it wouldn't be upstairs, it was down, stored at the base of the stairs tucked in a corner at the base, you know, between the outside doors and.
Now that you say that, there is a speakers, there are speakers upstairs in that room, I do know that.
Oh, when you look through the hole?
Yeah, I seen speakers in there, I'm like, what are they doing there?
They were speakers, yeah.
I'll get the key for me, Lynn, and I'll look in there.
I think uh, Town Cork and um, Janet Casey have it, they, they don't leave the key with us, cause it's supposedly has confidential.
You don't have the key for that? We need to cut down the fire.
I think the last time that we were in the slot, we just cut it off and got a new key, because they did the same thing to our key.
We, we need access for fires in that room, John Wigan.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look in there.
You could have kept it in the key box.
No, I had forgotten about that, so.
Yeah. Okay. See, I already went to there. I'm good, so the thing is, I'll give a motion to, we have no team, we go non-ball.
Uh-huh, thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn, uh, second, third, and I'll be it.
I'll be it.